All right. Call the meeting to order those that care to please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, would you lead us in prayer?
Let us pray. Father, we just thank you for this day. Thank you for this community. Thank you this time together. We're just praying that you would be with all those who were affected by the storms last night, the property that was destroyed, people who are hurt. Lord, I just pray that you would be, just thank you for your protection upon our community. And, Lord, I just pray you'd guide and direct us in the business we have tonight. Guide us in all that we do and say in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you for being here this evening. We're going to start things off with citizen participation. That is for anyone wishing to speak to something not on the agenda tonight. You will be allowed to poach the podium, state your name, your address, and you'll be given three minutes to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. I only have one person on the agenda. I hate to call you up right away, but here we go.
Ms. Shelton. Hi, my name is Janine Shelton and I live at 519 North Butternut Avenue in Republic. So, thank you for taking the time to listen to me today. I'm here speaking on behalf of many concerned parents and pedestrians. We are in need of a sidewalk on Hind Street between Butternut to Highway 174. This is currently a very dangerous area to walk. Moms walk down this busy street with strollers, children ride bikes to the park, and middle school children walk to the library and home from school. There are also many adults who use this street to enjoy walking and jogging to the park trails close by. I took a few pictures over the last few days. I have them. I couldn't give them to her if you like, or-
Please.
-to kind of show you just how busy this street is, just on a regular basis. It's quicker for people in our neighborhood to walk to local events, the parade, the AMP movie nights, and Pumpkin Days, things like that. Our driveways are often closer to the parking, or than the parking are to these events, so it's quicker for us to walk. I want to thank Mr. Cameron and the others who helped put together the proposal and cost estimates. I've taken a moment to look at these exhibits and have a few considerations my neighbors and I would like to make. The report raised concern about what you might find underground and what would need moved. I'm not an engineer or anything, but, and I do not know the extent of what needs to be done. However, currently there's waterline that needs replaced beneath the street where the sidewalk is being requested. In May of 2023, the Assistant Builds Administrator Garrett Brickner informed us that the city has replaced some of the waterline and hopes to get the waterline fully replaced in the winter of 2023 to early spring of 2024. I'm not sure where the city stands on this project now, but the answers to those questions may be found while working the waterline project in conjunction with the sidewalk and be able to save the city some money. In order to keep costs down in the future, my neighbors and I would also like to suggest the city contact the telephone companies that are considering running fiber optics while completing those two projects. Another concern listed in the report was the possible reaction that residents on Hind Street will have about building the sidewalks at their property. I've spoken to some of those neighbors and they're also eager for this. Most of these residents on Hind Street, as well as the residents on Logan, Forest, and West Streets, have to deal with trespassers on a regular basis due to the lack of sidewalk. And this is especially bothersome to the single mothers that own property there. We're excited to learn that there may be grants available through the ADA Transition Plan, and I think this project would be a great way to use those funds. The city is growing in our direction. Each homeowner on my street alone has invested about the same amount of money in our properties as it would cost to put in the sidewalk. We deserve to have safe access to the city's amenities that we help pay for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that was three minutes almost on the dot. Well done.
Good. I didn't know if I could talk faster.
Would you hand the photos to the clerk? And I will also let you know that the builds department are sitting on the third row and they were busily taking notes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cameron, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
No, but I have visited with Ms. Shelton. It is also in your admin report, and so I appreciate the staff that pulled together the estimates so that I could get that at least in front of you, because that's what I promised her, is like, this project got dropped somewhere, at least the awareness of it. And so, there's plenty of awareness in your admin report, which I promised her I would have in there. So, thank you for coming, because you wondered what's the value in being here. This council loves to hear, and so thank you for coming. I know that's hard, but you did a great job.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. There's only one item on the consent agenda, and that's the March 19th, 2024 council minutes. I need a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. That completes the consent agenda. We will move on to boards, commissions, and committee schedules. We have a Board of Adjustments meeting, April 4th, 2024, Planning and Zoning meeting, April 8th, 2024. The City Council meeting is April 16th, 2024, and another Board of Adjustments meeting on May 2nd, 2024. Moving on to old business and tabled items, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-12 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 40.64 acres located at 664 Aaron Way from Plan Development District, PDD, to Brookside Estates, Plan Development District, PDD 24001.
Thank you, ma'am. I know the staff presented on this issue last time. Is there any updates or issues from the city?
No.
Very good. Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to kind of throw out there that we were contacted by a lot of people during this, and that's what we're looking for, is we need that citizen participation. The developers talked to us, the staff has talked to us multiple times. Everybody's always been very professional and positive with it, whether they don't like it or are adamant that it doesn't happen. It stayed professional and it stayed polite, and that's very appreciated. So, I just want to thank everybody for giving us that input and coming to meetings, or sending emails, or sending texts, or calling, or the various ways we are contacted, because it really does make a difference, and it matters to hear everybody's opinion on these things. That's all I had.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-12, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote on our computers. By a vote of two to six to zero, the ordinance fails. Moving on to item number three on our agenda, this is 24-13. By the way, if you were here to watch this, you can stick around for the whole show, but you're also welcome to leave. Doesn't hurt my feelings. It's dinner time. Moving on to item number three, this is 24-13. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 24-13 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title IV, Land Use, Chapter 400, Comprehensive Plan and City Planning and Zoning Commission, Section 400.010, Created, Composition, Appointment Qualifications of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any updates from the city?
No.
Any questions, comments, or discussion from council on this issue? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 24-13, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. We will now take a roll call vote. Ordinance passes by a vote of eight to zero. That completes our old or tabled business, and we will move on to new business. Item number four on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-14 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Department of Labor for establishment of an employee apprenticeship program.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dwayne Compton, Fire Chief of the City of Republic. Don't pick on me, David. This is an intergovernment, an intergovernment IGA there.
I do that all the time, too. IGA.
It's not been a good day for speaking, thank God. I didn't have to address the chamber. David took that for me. So, this is with the Missouri Department of Labor. These are funds that are passed down from the federal government, Department of Labor, through the state, then down to the local level. And at the local level, you may see these ads on TV, workforce development Springfield, they have ads for the apprenticeship programs. There's fire service, law enforcement, electricians, other various jobs in the community that you can apply for. It's just not local government. It's private individuals that run businesses that can apply for. This project started about eight months ago. Captain Lynn Morgan brought this to my attention, and we met with them and brought Rachel Ritchie Graff onboard from HR Department, and those two were instrumental in chasing this down. What this does, by entering into this program, we will stand to get back approximately $26,000 for several of the new employees we've hired over the past couple, about 18 to 24 months. That money will be used to reimburse the city for the cost that we incurred while onboarding that boys. So, a lot of times we have to buy them new fire gear, or we incur expenses from uniforms and other things, so we can use that money to offset our costs. When we also enter into this IGA with them, if we have an employee that we want to hire and then send them to a fire academy, it will also help offset that cost of enrolling them and then the rate, hourly rate, into that academy. We haven't gone down that road yet, because that requires a whole employment contract and term that they need to work with us. Not something we want to do, but there are funds in this grant that's out there that if we want to do that later on, we can. The way this ordinance is worded, it's kind of, and Megan will correct me, it's kind of open-ended. So, we're the first ones to jump into this program. The police department can also get onboard as well. Public Works can also, if they have an onboarding program or apprenticeship-type program, they can get on as well. So, instead of each department coming back before this board, we've boarded the ordinance so that any other department from here on wants to join into this with the city administrator's approval, they can do so. The two staff members that have been instrumental in chasing this down, it took them about eight months. I gave up in about six months and waved white flag. Dealing with the federal government is not easy, and that's Captain Lynn Morgan and Rachel Ritchie Graff and the HR Department. And it's actually Rachel that was leading the charge. So, when the paperwork come through, Rachel was really happy. You may have seen her signature on page eight, which it didn't get sent in yet, so don't worry. But she wasn't going to let it get away. So, do any of you have any questions?
Are there any drawbacks into entering into this program? Is there something that could go sideways, or?
No, and if we have a person that quits, it's kind of paid out on a prorated basis, because our program onboarding probationary periods a year, which is what the police department is. So, if they quit into that, and we've already received funds, it's kind of like prorated out over quarters. So, it's no, and they expect things like that to happen. They expect employees to get into the program, and this isn't for me, I don't want to be in the fire service, or they may not pan out up to our expectations and we decide to part ways. So, they expect those things to happen. So, no, there's no really drawback. These are funds that are out there. The city of Springfield is using them. CU is using them for their electricians or linemen. A lot of private businesses have jumped onboard as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Please remember, this is a first read, so if you have any questions, get with chief before the next meeting. You were giving yourself too hard of a time. Dwayne, you did a great job.
Thank you.
That didn't seem sincere.
It's been a long day.
I hear you. Item number five, this is 24-15. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-15 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title VII, Utilities, Chapter 715, Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Article 715.2, Use of the Publicly Owned Treatment Works, Section 715.130, Connection to the Publicly Owned Treatment Works of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe staff is here to give a presentation. Don't forget to state your name, Mr. Cameron.
I was going to say, chief, it's my turn. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance is related to, again, the wastewater treatment plant. Several months ago, we were required to secure the low-interest funding, the interest rate for the loan for the wastewater plant. There's an ordinance that was required in that process, that is a very long and lengthy process, in that when the ordinance was submitted to DNR, they found an error with state statute where our ordinance did not comply with the statute, which basically, what that ordinance means is that when a new home or a sewer line is run by your property or run by a property owner that does not currently have sewer. So, like, basically, if you're a resident that has a septic tank and a new sewer line is run by your property, they are required, according to our ordinance, within 180 days. State statute requires when sewer becomes available, that you're to disconnect from your septic tank within 90 days. So, this is an ordinance amendment that reflects a reflection of accuracy to the state statute. Without the change of that, we do not qualify for the loan funding, which it's completely industry standard. Within 90 days, you would hook up. So, the 180 days, I get it. I would tell you this, as an organization or as a community, we would work with a resident to navigate what those are. I know of no situations, what we're in right now, that this would impact anyone in the community whatsoever. So, but staff is recommending approval. Again, it's more of a, just in their audit of the ordinance, they found an error with our statute in compliance with state statute.
Questions from council on this issue? Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin. So, I know you said it doesn't affect anyone now currently that we know of, but how would someone know that that was a responsibility to hook up within 30?
Great question. So, when you, when sewer lines are run, most typically, if it's within a certain distance of their property is one. So, if we're running it through the property, securing easement, part of that easement acquisition, or securing the easement against, through, if we're going through an unsewered area, they would be notified. Plus, most likely, if you're on a septic tank, you're being annexed at the same time. So, then your consent to annex requires you to hook up, so that all that would be disclosed at the time that we were annexing the property. Once sewer comes in, you will not be able to keep your, it's like, in a bigger annexation, once we take in your property, a sewer line comes in, you're required with, once it's available. Because sometimes in annexations, and many don't know, sewer's not immediately available. Like, when Brookline came into the City of Republic in, was it '07 or 2012, it took time to go out there. But in some instances, I'd have to almost, I'm, well, maybe, maybe an error in that, because I'm not sure if everyone in the Brookline area is actually connected to the sewer system once it run through. So, I'd have to verify what I just said, because I do believe there might be people that are still not connected in that capacity, and maybe that was part of the consolidation. But in a situation where you're doing a consolidation or an annexation, and once sewer becomes available, they have 90 days to hook up. Right now, the ordinance states 180. So, they would be notified in the annexation process, and once sewer became available, but they would have signed a consent to annex prior to hooking up to it.
And known that responsibility.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read, so if you have questions, get with staff before the next meeting. Madam Attorney, items number six and seven are going to be discussed together. That's a new thing, Chris.
It's a feature.
Awesome. Do I need to, do we need to open both of these up, or can we just procedurally on items number six and seven?
We can, well, she can shortcut her discussion on the second item, but they have to be read separately.
Very good.
For the same procedures.
Item number six on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-16 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Drury Properties, Inc., for right-of-way access and other related obligations as part of the New Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. Karen Haynes, Planning and Development Manager. I'll be brief. The next four are related to one another. Staff is recommending approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Republic Schools and Drury Properties, formalizing conditions for access and improvements for the New Republic Middle School under construction. Drury Properties is providing access through their property located at 5905 West US Highway 60 for the construction of a new segment of Farm Road 107 north of US Highway 60 to serve the school. This is the exhibit in front of you on the TV. This is in exchange for like footage, square footage, from the school. The school is responsible for the construction of the new public streets segment, and then will dedicate that right-of-way back to the city upon construction. This will function as a right-in, right-out to serve the new middle school until 2027, when MoDOT is scheduled to install a signal at this, this location as part of the US Highway 60, six-lane highway expansion project. As I mentioned, this is one of two IGAs outlining conditions for the exchange of property and required street improvements between the school, the city, Drury Properties, and MoDOT. Specifically, the first item, the school is giving to Drury 0.86 acres. That's the portion intersecting directly with US Highway 60, and exchange Drury is giving to the city that dedicated right-of-way of approximately 0.6 acres. There are several other conditions. Drury's access to US Highway 60 will remain open until the road is constructed and then dedicated to the school. The city has agreed to remove and construct new fencing on Drury's property. Drury will also have a new access point onto the new Farm Road 107 at two different locations, and also a new access point to a back frontage road that will be constructed as part of the school project. As I mentioned, we are recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council on this issue? Seeing none, Mr. Cameron.
Mr. Mayor, Karen, I think you just did a fantastic job of explaining a very longstanding process, that you had partial involvement, then you picked it back up. You just did a fabulous job of explaining that. One question for you, in the access road, to your recollection, does this not also provide an opportunity for us in the future to connect to the regional park on the backside of the road as the school's being built, if I recall that design? And I'm putting you on the spot, because I'm the one that's been in most of those, if I recall, in most of those meetings, if I recall, that road does connect back as the opportunity for us to go back to our regional park in the future?
Yeah, the access road that you're mentioning will be the, the front access road for the school, basically along the property line right north of Jackson Company, serving the school, southern boundary of the new school, and then it will actually curve to the north. There'll be like a secondary or a third phase of that constructed road that'll serve the new school.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions hearing any of that? All right, seeing none, please remember, this is a first read. Don't go anywhere, Karen.
Yeah.
Perfect. Item number seven on our agenda, this is 24-17. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-17 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and Drury Properties, Inc., for right-of-way access and other related obligations as part of the New Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Staff is recommending approval of the reference agreement between the City of Republic, the school, Drury, and again, MoDOT. This specifically outlines the conditions of the construction of the interim right-in, right-out to serve the new school, Farm Road 107 and US Highway 60. Drury's current access to US Highway 60 will be relocated to what will be the new right-in, right-out intersection for the school. Specifically, the school is responsible for the construction of the interim road and also the intersection. Upon completion of the road construction, the city does agree to accept the road as a public street. Drury's property located to the east at 5745 West US Highway 60 will be provided a shared access to US Highway 60 as part of this agreement, that is with an adjacent property. And then also, the city and school understand the residential access point to a third party directly west of Drury, or directly east of Drury's property must be closed and are required to provide an alternate point of access to the school's new public street. All parties are agreeing to participate with MoDOT on this acquisition if necessary.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions from council on this issue? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read. Get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to item number eight on our agenda, this is 24-18. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-18 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Springfield Evergreen Holdings, LLC, for installation and maintenance of sewer infrastructure to service the New Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Staff is recommending approval of the first of two IGAs with the Republic Schools and property owners for off-site sanitary sewer easements to serve the new middle school. That's the exhibit in front of you. The IGA outlines the specifics for construction of a portion of sanitary sewer main from the new school through an adjacent property owned by Springfield Evergreen. This is located at 6139 West US Highway 60. The school is responsible for construction of the sewer main, and then will dedicate the sewer main and associated easement back to the city upon completion of construction.
Questions from council on this issue? Seeing none, please remember this, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Franklin.
Just a general question. What's, but this sewer line, it goes up, turns, and there's another one? What's the?
The reason for that is due to negotiations with adjacent property owners that became a little difficult, that they had to utilize to separate property owners that were agreeable to the terms.
Okay.
It was the, the path of least resistance.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, please remember, this is a first read. You can get with staff to answer any questions before the next meeting. Item number nine on our agenda, I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-19 by title only, please.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Republic R3 School District and Great Escape Beer Works, LLC, for installation and maintenance of sewer infrastructure to service the New Republic Intermediate School Project.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. This is the last IGA. This is very similar to the previous one regarding off-site sanitary sewer improvements. Staff is recommending approval for a sanitary sewer main to be constructed on the Great Escape's property. Very similar to the last one, we are requesting approval of an IGA to execute the easement.
So, if this passes at the next meeting, I will be entering into an agreement with Republic School and a beer place.
Correct.
That'll be exciting. Separate agreement, sorry. I can do this?
Yes.
All right. Any questions on this issue besides the irony of the parties? No questions? I guess I'm just, all right. Thank you, Karen. Moving on to item number 10 on the agenda, this is 24-20. I would entertain a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 24-20 by title only, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries by a vote of eight to zero. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance of the City Council amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter 120, City Officers and Employees, Article 121, General Provisions, Section 120.025, Mayor and Council Compensation of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have it. Go for it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to share with the background related to this ordinance is, and a little bit of the history of the, of the community when it comes to mayor and council compensation, as to like, why the timing or why the discussion in general. In our code and our charter, the way it's handled is council members cannot vote upon themselves and increase in pay while they're sitting in their seats. So, basically, if there's a change in compensation in the mayor and council seats, those must be done prior to another council. So, once an election takes place, it would take an election to take place before the new comp- new compensation would take, taken into effect. And so basically, staff brought it to my attention before this last, before this last meeting that, hey, don't forget there's the, you cannot change the compensation once the ballot or the, the vote has been taken and a new council is seated. So this is a very rare situation in the city because what has to happen is with each municipal election, then that would change. But you have all nine seats up for election at the same time. So I drafted, I instructed staff to, to prepare an ordinance to address some of the discrepancies or challenges that we see as a staff and things, but also to provide consideration for this elected body that will be going out even though some of those members are on the ballot today and tonight. So the reason why, no council member approached my office asking for additional considerations. There's been no phone call. It's been a discussion amongst staff for probably since my tenure is just like, what's the history of it? Why? And when does it need to change? There's also been discussion amongst staff as what would it take for more engagement, more participation, and more attendance? Because right now, the current ordinance, regardless if there's attendance or not, council members are compensated at $200 a month, the mayor at $400 a month, and attendance is not necessarily required. The ordinance that's been prepared, or that I instructed staff to prepare, at least for consideration. And again, I want to say one other thing, it's not typical for the administrator or staff to be at least reminding this body. So in fairness to the body, they did not really, like, what are you doing this for? It's like your charter says, your ordinance says. So to be clear on that. But provided an ordinance that would change the pay, it started in 1997 at $100. It started and then it was revised in 2008 at $200 per month. So it has not changed for 16 years. So therefore, I drafted an ordinance that would state that the council would be compensated at $250 per meeting based upon attendance, the mayor at $500 a meeting based upon attendance to reflect the changes in inflation, to change the, the volume that's going on, but also for consideration for the, the impact that we have upon the obligations that the mayor has to take on or had to take on.
Had to.
So in doing so, I reached out to council saying, listen, I would have normally announced this at the last meeting, but I have the right to, as long as there's no conversation taking place, to announce that, hey, I'm preparing this to put on the agenda. There's no conversation or contact that takes place after that. I make it very clear. But the mayor did reach out because he is a non-voting member in that capacity, said, David, I'm not comfortable with this. I'd like for it to be removed from any consideration of to be put on the agenda. In consideration of that request, I stated that I would not place it on the agenda, but I also make it clear to a council member, to the council, that they have the right, per the ordinance, to request a measure be placed on an agenda. So that's how we got here. So council member Franklin did reach out and request that this be placed, or reached out to the clerk and requested that the ordinance be placed on discussion. And so that is why it is there. But no council member requested how this was drafted or how this was established. So why, as a staff, we establish the ordinance is one is because logistically, it's the only time it can be considered before a new council member and mayor have taken their seat. So otherwise, if it's not addressed, then it will require till the next municipal election before it can be addressed, should the council and mayor choose to pick this up at a later date. But our position is, and this is what it is, the engagement and the challenges that are associated with it, the attendance, I've been in this capacity for less than eight years, and this is no disrespect to anything, but I've seen five different people behind this gavel, 24 different council member faces in that same time, finding people to be there. And I appreciate every person that served, and it's not that those people have not set and been here for a while, but I've seen a lot of faces come and go because the time commitment, what's involved, I've even heard it said here, it's just not worth it. And so finding a way for people to keep up with that, it's not uncommon to increase and to pay council members. It may be a little bit more uncommon in southwest Missouri, but it's not uncommon in that general environment. And so for us, considering the, the direction and the opportunity, I placed it on the agenda for consideration. And from that point, it is on here at the request of council member Franklin. And so for that, Mr. Mayor, I'll take any questions or I'll turn it over to council member Franklin.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, David's correct. And at first, I heard this idea and it, it didn't have, I wasn't in favor of it. And I really had to focus. I had to remove myself from this conversation in my head and kind of remove that since, you know, there are some of us going to be on the next council. But this is a very unique situation. I don't know if we'll ever see this again, where all eight council members and the mayor are up for reelection. And so I saw the uniqueness of this situation. My six years being up here, my entire time up here, all I've done is engage the public and try to find interest and try to find other people that wanted to do the same and serve. And what brought me up here at first was my passion. And it's my passion that I have that keeps me going and it puts all of the hours that I have to put into this. I look at other people and I try to bring other people into this, and I'm almost afraid to tell them how many hours I put in every week. It just depends, especially this week with our rezone. I know everyone else spent a tremendous amount of time on that. I did as well. When I started this, normally we would get, you know, our, our agenda on a Thursday, Friday, we have a weekend to get over our questions, formulate them from Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday council meeting. And then as we progressed, it became, you know, I kind of had to isolate Tuesday so that I could talk to constituents and have my weekend. And where we're sitting at now, you know, I'm basically using my entire weekend, my Monday and my Tuesday, which does affect me personally in my job. I can't say that it doesn't. It affects me with my, my customers and everyone else. It makes me look bad as a business owner when I have to leave my job to take care of things and talk to the constituency. And so when I'm looking at other people and trying to get other people to have that same sort of passion to serve, it's just not there. I get excuses such as there's no pay, I don't have enough time. And that's one of the things that breaks my heart the most is when people tell me I don't have enough time to do that job. Because then I'm looking at myself and if I follow through with this four-year term, that's 10 years of my life that I've given up here. And I'm not asking for compensation. I did this voluntarily. But when I look to the future and the people that are going to be up here after me, I'm a little bit concerned. Out of 20,000 people, we had 15 people put on our names on their ballot this time. And to me, that's not enough passion in the community. I know we can't correct that, but compensation is definitely something that, when I'm looking at becoming mayor and I'm looking at council and I want council to be involved and I want council to be communicating with the constituency and I want them to know everything to the best of their ability, in order for me to ask them to step up and, and take another, another step into that and, and further vest themselves into this position, I have a hard time with that because I know they have the same excuse, not excuse, I know they have the same concern as everyone else is. And I've heard it up here a lot. People that have children, you want to spend time with your children. A four-year term is your entire time, entire child's high school, four grades. It's middle school. It's grade school. Everyone with children. For me and my wife, it's a lot of explaining to my wife the different things that, you know, I have to be here for this and so we can't always do what we want when vacation and plan, and so we have to plan around this. There's really no compensation or anything I can give to her other than my passion that says, hey, I need to do this, other than the city and the citizens of Republic. And so I'm looking for ways to encourage other people to run. I didn't think about this until a couple of weeks ago, so I'm glad this came up because this has been a longstanding issue. As I've sat up here and we have non-quarums, we have council members that aren't here, we have council members that have better things to do. That bothers me. So when I did see that we get paid for being here and for not being here, we don't get paid, that was very attractive to me. Because when I have to change my schedule after I've agreed to our schedule for the year, it complicates my life extremely. So I think even just having that for our council as a motivator to be here, getting paid for being here and not being paid for not being here was something that definitely made me in favor of this. I have a lot of other things, but I feel like I could go on for a while about this. This is a passion of mine and it's not that I feel like I need compensation. It's just that if I didn't have to focus on my work so much and work every weekend to compensate for what I do up here, I could do more. I could involve council more. I could take more to the people. I can inform the people more. But where I'm at now is a limit. I need to find a balance for that. I know and I understand, I'm fine with that. But I need something to offer to other people so that I can stir their passion and so that we're not sitting up here with the mayor appointing all of these positions time and time again. Four-year term is a long-term commitment, and I really do feel like a four-year term commitment does need to have something attached to it more than where we're at now currently.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other council members wishing to speak on this issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just want to reiterate that part about not getting paid for not showing up. I think that's a major point to this of, it's silly that we're compensating somebody for not doing something. And so that, that's a very important piece.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
I'm not going to be here in a week, which is, you know, I'll just be a regular, one of these people.
But you're going to come to meetings.
I'm never going to come to these meetings. I didn't before. I won't again.
I knew you'd watch.
Did anyone review his comments before we started?
Yes.
Look, I might be in the minority on this, and I know that I've said some things up here that certainly aren't in alignment with the other people on this panel, and that's a good thing, I think, you know, having different viewpoints, representing the people of this city, to me, is important. I've spoke a couple of times up here about not seeing any women on this council. That's important to me. So is having a different viewpoint and I, for me, don't believe anybody up here besides the people who are employed by the city should get paid to do this. This is an honor. When I got the phone call from the, the mayor that, the paperwork that I'd put in when, sadly, Mr. Dykman passed away, that I was gonna be offered the spot to, to take his seat. Boy, despite Laura not spelling my name correctly on the nameplate, which is my favorite thing that's happened here, no, I mean, I was, I was honored to do it. And I still feel that honor every time. I hear Mr. Franklin, and him and I certainly don't align with our viewpoints a lot, but man, I understand when he says it's a sacrifice because it definitely is a sacrifice. But to me, sacrifice requires sacrifice. And it's not just the time, but when we are in the middle of a, you know, having to vote on whether or not we're gonna have our citizens pay X amount more on their sewer bill to go up the next year and go up the next year. To me, number one, it's a pretty bad look to ask to compensate the people up here for their sacrifice. And number two, boy, it's just an honor to be here next to these guys and people who have served for 150 years and people who are clearly passionate about this, that, that they would do it. And I, I believe Mr. Franklin would do it if there was no money attached whatsoever because that's the kind of person and that's the kind of passion that he has. I don't think the problem has been getting people to serve. I think the problem has been finding people, the right people to do it. And I think there are people out there, I think we found quite a few of them on this panel. I hope that they stay up here. But to me, and I'll wrap it up, my anti-argument to that one is it's, it's the job itself is reward enough, serving our community is reward enough. And especially with what we're having to do right now, I, I would, I would love to see the opposite of this proposal and that all of the compensation be eliminated. But again, I won't be here in a week, so it doesn't matter to me that much financially. I can say this and then move on.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So going back to what some of the comments have already been made, I served 19 years on a fire department, volunteer fire department with very little compensation. When I started, I think it was like a dollar 90 a call.
Are you serious?
Yeah. It went up to three something, $3 and something a call when I left there. I served on the planning and zoning committee for two and a half years. And then I'm going to tell on myself a little bit here. So when I applied for this position, I didn't know it was paid.
Yeah, neither did I when I applied.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I sat down with HR and I said, can I not get paid? And she said, well, that's going to create a lot of work and they're already working a lot. So I was like, well, just forget I asked and continue the way you do it. However, with this ordinance, I do like the fact that there is some accountability to it. If you show up, you do get paid. And then for the mayor's position, I know that it is a whole lot more time-consuming than for the council. And, and I think that needs to be adjusted accordingly. But it is, to Clint's point, it is an honor to be up here and to serve the citizens and to work with incredible staff and be alongside incredible councils. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak? So.
Right, Mr. Mayor.
Up. Yes, Mr. Wilson, thank you.
When I started, neighbors wanted me to run, kept after and kept after me, so I finally ran. And to my surprise, I got it. The second surprise was after being on the council, I checked, come in the mail for $100. I was not aware it was a paid position. That's all I got to say.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? Well, I'll say this. I think context is important, so I need to give you a little context. Friday, the email came out from Mr. Cameron. I was already in a bad mood. I was in a bad mood because we, my family wanted to go out to eat to a place I don't like to eat, but they serve non-stop rolls, so my boys really like it. So I was angry that I had to go to this restaurant, and I'm talking to my wife about this email that I get from David. And not many emails get me wound up from David, but this one got me wound up, and I was just mad. I was mad. I was mad that I was at this restaurant. I was mad that we were dealing with this. I was mad that, you mean, on my way out, we're going to give everybody raises? What is up with this? And I was mad. And my, my boys, of course, listen and sometimes give me a hard time, but sometimes ask really good questions. And Nick says, well, how much money would it take for you to be mayor? You're talking about raises. How much money is it worth? You've done the job. And I said, it's a really good question. And I said, quite frankly, there is not an amount of money to compensate me adequately for doing this job. Mr. Franklin's absolutely right. This, this job up here personally affects us. It has absolutely hurt my day job. I have not worked as much at my day job doing this job as I should. My law partner was the second happiest person when I announced that I wasn't going to run again, right after my wife. And the reason is, it, because it hurts the bottom line, and there's no doubt about that. There, so when my son asks how much money, I said, you know, if I was going to quantify it, it would have to be an amount that was so astronomical, it wouldn't be fair. I'd, I'd like have to get your college paid for or something like that. And that was my honest answer because the difference between $400 and $500 is not enough to take care of the stress that I went through the last four years and that Mr. Franklin's about ready to sit through. It's not, there is just not a monetary amount that fits this. So if that's the case, and then I calmed down because Nick put me in my place, I started talking and I said, look, and I met with David and I said, this isn't right. We are absolutely positively asking our citizens to pay more money for a wastewater plant that has to be done. And on my way out, we give everybody a raise. That just doesn't feel right to me for a volunteer position because I think if we honestly talked about this, most of us would be shocked that we got paid to do this when we came on board. I know that I was. I, I see several heads nodding. So if it's not monetary, it's symbolic. It's a symbol. It's a, the money's a symbol, a symbol of, here, we value you. That very small raise is not enough as a symbol to make up for what we're telling the citizens, that our pocketbooks are more important than your pocketbooks. I cannot in good conscience, if I had the ability to vote for this, vote for this. And it's because what we're telling the citizens, you have to pony up more money because we need it. We're up here doing a service that's an honor, and I just, I cannot see paying ourselves more. But that's where I come from. So with that, please remember it's a first read. So with that, please remember, it's a first read, you have the opportunity to speak with staff on this issue. There have been other suggestions about how this could look. If there is a, it's gonna be a mess if there's a motion to try to amend, but there are other opportunities for improvement on this. So if you do want this to look different, please get with staff before the next meeting. Moving on to resolutions, this is item number 11 on our agenda. This is 24-R-14, a resolution of the City Council authorizing the city administrator to negotiate and enter into an agreement with Precision Construction and Contracting LLC for design-build services for the new tennis and pickleball facility. I always wanna say faculty, it's facility, at Miller Park. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-14, please.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second. Jared, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared Keeling, Parks and Recreation Director, provide a little bit of background on the project, because it is important and is relevant. So when the citizens passed capital improvement sales tax for parks in the fall of 2022, we promised three projects. The first one of is the Rush Republic Aquatic Park. We're getting close, 53 days from opening, and tremendously excited about it, and I know our community is tremendously excited about it as well. The second one was to bring about a community event space at JR Martin Park. That project is gonna go out to bid probably mid-May, hope to deliver that by spring of next year, but to make room for that project and to make way for that project at JR Martin Park, we do have to demo the existing tennis courts over there. I'll say that for two reasons. A, we gotta make room for the project, and B, those were built in 1970, that roughly have two inches of asphalt on them, and they could probably need a significant upgrade anyway. So we desire to move those tennis courts to Miller Park at the location you see there, immediately to the north of the Rush, believe that will be tremendously well-suited there, well-placed there, as most of the people that come play pickleball anyway, and I'll get to that in a minute, come to the community center already. So what we're calling for, we went through a design-build process, RFQ process for a design-build option delivery service for this project. First one we've done for parks, a build's on the build's building, we've never done it before, so far, so good, just went tremendously well. We had four people respond to our RFQ, really competitive RFQ, but ultimately, we got exactly what we were looking for in PCC Sports. But the design you see up there, and I'll go to the next one to zoom in on a little bit, we desire to bring new courts, two tennis courts and eight pickleball courts to Miller Park. Speaks of really two things. A, the gradual decline of participation in tennis a little bit, but we're still giving them two high-quality tennis courts, and B, the overwhelming popularity of pickleball. We play, it feels like, eight days a week at the community center, but it's always packed, and we're following just a regional and national trend. People are building more and more and more pickleball courts, they're converting more tennis courts to pickleball courts. We have, the demand is already there, but what I love more than anything about this whole project is we will deliver best-in-class in 417 land. These are post-tension concrete courts. What that means is they're better, better than asphalt courts, better than slab-grade concrete courts. They won't guarantee against tracking, yes, there's a 10-year guarantee on there, there'll still be some small surface cracks, but if you're familiar with traditional asphalt tennis courts, you can subject yourselves to large cracks in those, and you're doing preventative maintenance all the time. There'll be some maintenance on these, but not near as much as asphalt tennis courts. So tremendously excited about bringing this project about. We have ultimately selected PCC Sports, and that was through a lot of due diligence and due diligence on behalf of our staff. So they built tennis courts and baller, our staff went out there and toured those, they've been in place there for two or three years. They're blown away by how nice those tennis courts were. They're currently doing some, a project in Reed Springs, and they're currently doing another, getting ready to do a monster project in Webb City. So we've interviewed them, we feel very comfortable with PCC Sports. They've actually accelerated our timeline, which is great. We thought we maybe could deliver this by August the 1st, they think they can get it done by the first part of July, so we are recommending PCC Sports for the project. So with that said, I'll have to easily entertain any questions.
Questions from council? Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is it, are those lights that I see around?
So I'd like to challenge our staff, we're gonna self-perform the light work, that won't be easy, but we're doing that to save money.
But it will be lit, so...
They will be lit.
Awesome. So hours, is that the same park hours, 11 o'clock?
Yes, correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So if you're playing pickleball and you have to use the bathroom, where are you gonna go?
So I don't know if you'll remember Mr., a little brain work, a grief, Mr. Updike. I've been like Mr. Dwayne, I've had a lot of names today, so my apologies, Mr. Updike, I apologize. So we brought about a month or so ago, a remodel of the existing shed in Miller Park, and we're gonna remodel that to restrooms. Westport Construction is actually currently on site and doing that as we speak. We believe those restrooms will be open by July 1st, and my apologies for the name.
Other questions?
Is there something you can do about the fact that my mother-in-law's become so obsessed with pickleball, she's playing at the rec, going to my house to take a nap, and then going back to the rec to play?
Man, I would like to say she's a unicorn, but she's not, like, I mean, there's like a, like an, must be an addictive quality to it.
Have you played yet?
I have, I'm not good, but like, what I, cut through the jokes, but you literally will see a teen playing a senior out there, and that's what makes that sport just incredibly special. They're popping up all over the planet, really, you'll see Chicken and Pickle, and there's different names for them or whatever, but we will have the best-in-class. I wanna make sure, I can't say that enough, we're doing it the right way, and post-tension concrete courts will be the best-in-class in 417 land. We've already been approached, Ozark Pickleball Club, is that the name of it? Other entities wanting to have their events here, but we're gonna take care of our people first, and then we may do their events second.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
As this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote, which is what I will do. All those in favor of 24-R-14, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution passes by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to the last resolution, last item on our agenda, this is number 12, 24-R-15, a resolution of the City Council awarding the bid for the city's 2024 paving overlays and builds parking lot paving to Blevins Asphalt Construction Company, Inc. I need a motion and a second to take up resolution 24-R-15, please.
Motion. Second.
Where'd you get that? We have a motion and a second. Good evening.
Hi, Angel Phalik, city engineer. So I'm here tonight to tell you guys about some bids the city had requested. They involve two different projects, 2024 city overlays and builds parking lot paving. We bundled this in one invitation for bid. Unfortunately, we received, the bids weren't that competitive, so our lowest bidder was Blevins Asphalt, and the unit cost for the proposed work is seven, seventy-five dollars and fifty cents per ton asphalt, two dollars and twenty, twenty cents for milling with a not sixty amount of... The builds lot paving will be paid for by Capital Project Fund, and the city overlays will be paid for by the street resurfacing. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Do we have questions from council on this issue? Mr. Franklin?
Mr. Mayor, I just had kind of a, just a general question. I mean, asphalt, I'm around construction, I know asphalt creates challenges in the summertime. Is that going to be sufficient for the builds parking lot and give a lasting finish?
So we propose two different types of asphalt thicknesses, five for entrance right there, and then two for the general parking area. Two inches is nearly not enough to support the heavy equipment that we drive on it. Our plan is just to keep the subgrade at least flat enough, so we can, as you all know, it's really hard to maintain gravel when it snows and stuff, so that's our plan right now, to just pave it with two inches and then kinda see how it goes.
But then the approaches would be the thicker, so it wouldn't have the rough appearances. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from council? Blevins is who did the paving last year, correct?
Yes, they've done some work in the city.
How'd they do?
Pretty good, for the cost that they have provided to us.
Were they on time? Did they meet their timelines?
Yes, they met all the timelines, and our plan is to complete all this paving before school starts, and as was our plan last year.
Did we use our entire streets budget that was allocated for the street paving?
So our street resurfacing fund, to my understanding, is around five hundred thousand, so we're just under that, and Capital Project Fund is gonna help support, pay for this parking lot here.
Any other questions hearing those? Seeing none, and as this is a resolution, we can call it immediately for a vote. All those in favor of 24-R-15, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Resolution 24-R-15 passes by a vote of eight to zero. We will now turn it over to reports from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Angel, a great job. Karen, great job. Angel, I know you kinda, you kind of inherited that one too, and I was like, I'm kinda glad the question was a little bit easier, it's like the parking lots, for the engineer to figure that out, pretty good. So, and Chief, I thought you did a great job as well with the discussion. I think, I appreciate the conversation tonight, and just the understanding around the compensation for council. It's not stuff that, like I said, the staff would necessarily present, but with the consideration to timing of that, but also appreciate that there's consideration to have discussion regarding that ordinance between now and the second read. I'd love to get the feedback, because a lot of the objective in there as well is to tie it to performance and attendance. I like the fact that there is a conversation about what the mayor's role does require, I think, about the Ozarks Transportation Organization, that is a seated member, which is the mayor's seat, so that is a, I mean, it's like every month, there's a two-hour lunch meeting, there's Ozark, or the Green County Mayor's Association, so I do think, I appreciate that consideration. I can help with that conversation as to what the time constraints or additional pieces, so please let me know or let Megan know. I know that we worked on the golf cart ordinances, if you have suggested edits. I know the city attorney, I would also encourage you that it has to go to the city attorney to help draft those edits, so kinda like how the golf courts or golf cart ordinance worked. Please pursue that avenue into calling Megan or emailing Megan with suggested ideas for what the edits would be between now and the second read, if you have any. Mallory? Yes, met Ms. Mallory today at the Republic Chamber, and she asked what time we met tonight. So thank you for being here, didn't mean to embarrass you or call you out, but I appreciate the fact that you went to the chamber, you wanted to know how to become engaged, and so the first meeting we had, you came to a doozy. So welcome to our community. She moved from, I think you said to me at the chamber, you moved from Ozark to Republic. Welcome to the good side, to my Ozark friends, I'm just kidding.
No, he's not.
Especially in sports. To the school, MoDOT, Mitch, our staff, to pull together what is before you tonight for those four ordinances, we make it look very easy up here, but there's been a lot of, I mean, even to Megan, our attorney, who helped draft those documents between, you've got the attorneys for MoDOT, the attorney for the city, the attorney for the school, and the attorney for developer, all tied together, and when everybody has, you're laughing.
Picture of four attorneys tied together is kinda funny to me, I don't know why.
It is, it is.
When we throw ourselves into the ocean, right?
So, no.
Sorry.
No.
Yeah, thank you.
Who said that?
Thank you.
So I wanna thank you for everybody that's worked on that, because getting that secondary access to that school versus just having one at that one intersection, for those of us that go through Main and 174 in the morning and see how we've had to work to improve those points of ingress and egress, I'm just gonna say job well done to the school, to Mr. Jury, and even for MoDOT for coming to the table, even though I'm pretty hard on them from time to time, but I wanna give them credit that they stepped up. Ms. Shelton, thank you for your message, and thank you for being here again. Driving out there, as soon as I saw the email from Mr. Wilson, again, it's all, it's in y'all's admin report, again, which if you're a member of the community that's posted online, you can read the same response and what Ms. Shelton's talking about of the trail, but I drove out there and took a look at it. It does have a need, and again, what we'll do is we'll, when we go to budget season, we'll present that to the elected body for consideration against all the other capital projects and things that are there, and they still have the right to consider all the other ones that are there, but I tell you, by driving out and looking at it and staff being involved, we'll continue to do that, and we'll provide you updates, so you're not just like waiting, like, what's the status? So I apologize you had to wait for a status, but once I found out, we're on it, and I hope you see that that's how we actually get it done. Just wanna give a quick update on the downtown. Mayor Russell, you requested prior to your last read and on a logistical, on your last night, so it will actually be on your last night, but it will not be as you as mayor.
That's all right, as long as it's getting done.
But I missed that part, because it was not gonna be an ordinance, it's a resolution. So we are preparing a resolution for the Historical Society to build their building in the downtown. If you recall, at the last meeting, they asked us for the land. One of the considerations that, in talking with the Historical Society today, and why I bring that up, we will have that on the next agenda for the council's consideration to convey as they grow and expand, to put the Historical Society in that property. The challenge with that, that we were discussing today, not the challenge with that, but what we're going to be asking as well, and I discussed this with the Historical Society, and this is gonna be news to the council today, is part of the ongoing discussion is how to relocate the city hall, the properties, those that have not been on this council for any length of time do not recall the history we had of it in 17, 18 with the mold and the things, why we tore down the other building, but we've kinda had to occupy the city hall facility, even knowing it had over a million dollars' worth of repairs to bring it up to city code. We've had to move staff out because of issues inside the building, there's only five people remaining in the building now, now the rest of the staff. In fact, I'm one of the only five that's remaining in the valley, we're the last to jump ship, but I do believe there's gonna be a resolution coming that I believe that if we're going to convey all those properties, that we also ought to consider conveying the existing building, either donating that property so that they have access to the whole parcel plus the building to grow and build, because once that property is built by the Historical Society, it pretty much renders the current city hall, that there's nothing that really can be done other than continuing to exist, and it cannot be expanded. So you will see a resolution coming before the council after that one, but we need to get this one on the next agenda, so they can apply for the grant. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention in general, because you're gonna start seeing information, well, some, we'll be seeing information to address the city hall needs in the coming weeks and months. Shuler Creek, I have to provide this, this update, I need to read it, because there was a change to the Shuler Creek Trail, and per the requirements of MoDOT for the funding, there has to be a public notice, and so the City Republic will be accepting public comment on the final plans for the Shuler Creek Trail project, including trail design, crossings, and final engineering. Final plans can be found on the city's website at republicmo.com. Public comments will be accepted via email to trail@republicmo.com from April 3rd through April 18th, 2024. Alternatively, the final plans may be viewed and written comments accepted at the builds department located at 4221 South Wilson's Creek Boulevard in Republic, Missouri during regular business hours, 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. The why to this is because we made some, as we've adjusted on that trail to help accommodate, to eliminate easements, and to, as this council has been completely aware of, there was one change that we made, that MoDOT believed there needed to be additional public comment, and so I believe that was the underpass versus going subsurface, and so we are making this announcement. So if there's any comments about being under the street or going over the street, you're encouraged to comment. Also, in the admin report, I'm not gonna belabor it, but just going there, there is a pre-comment regarding the wastewater plant. I just encourage people, if you wanna understand what we're paying 95 to 150 million dollars for, you can read through that big O dissertation, but all the rules and regulations of what they're implying, or imposing upon the city, and I'm not complaining about our, I almost said MoDOT, BNR, is in there. So if you wanna kinda see what's happening in your community and learning what's happening with the wastewater plant from phosphorus, TKN, and all the other things they're wanting to do, it's right there in the document. And the last thing that I wanna say is because this will be the last time that the mayor or council member, Gerlick, will be in their seat for their final comments, I just wanna make a comment to you while you're sitting there. Councilmember Gerlick, I do wanna thank you, because to sit there and to serve when we called, or when Matt called, and to step up and to place yourself in that position, it's unfortunate from the ability for you to put your name on a ballot based upon what you do, and I recognize that, but you've done a great job of, in your capacity, you've always been very forthcoming, stayed your position. I remember the first time we went to lunch, took him out to lunch, and said, so what is this, like the shakedown? I was like, I don't know, like, no? He's like, so is this where we collab, or is this where we kinda collude and figure out what we're gonna do? I was like, no. So what's it about? It's just...
Did we went to lunch?
Zero recollection. I will say that Clint, on the personal side, might be the most competitive guy I've ever met in my life. He does not believe in ties, and it makes him extremely upset, especially in his own house, so I just wanna thank you for your service and your transparency and the passion by what you go about it and state your position, and for the humor that you brought to this body and just the laid-back nature of it, but also just know that I can count on you for just a good chuckle and to keep it light, but also to keep passionate, and be passionate about your job. I know when we were dealing with the, some of the development out in Brookline, you went and spent a whole afternoon talking to people, and so I know that you invest your time, and you did that without a lot of recognition, so thank you for your service. Mr. Mayor, I remember when we brought you on, and so this one's a little bit different, because we asked you to serve, your wife at that time was telling you, hey, Matt, it's a great idea to be on the council and Mayor Ustery, and I met with you, and you two worked it out to come onboard, and then you stepped into the Mayor Pro Tem, and I will say during some of the fastest-growing seasons of the city between Mayor Ustery and yourself, I thought, I think that you have done a fantastic job of leading, and the one thing that I will say about it, because like, when Matt comes to my office, and he told you... and he told you, came to my, he shared that he came to my office and he disagreed with it, we're kind of like two brothers that just have intense fellowship from time to time and.
That's another word for a fight.
And, but it's, what I've always loved about Matt being an attorney is, is just statesmanship. It's like, it's an argument that you're arguing your position and arguing your case. And, and even though I'm not an attorney, I think, I think I play one sometimes, but we have had a lot of deep discussions about what is the best interest and what does it look like and for the community and are you sure? I remember when we were buying the land for the, the parks department and we were in the middle of a ballot measure and he's like, for the public safety tax. And he's like, how are you going to explain that you have money for land? It was not money that was coming from public safety, but it was a combination of things. But he actually asked me if I was crazy and partly so, yes, but.
I have, Clint, how do you say that? I have no recollection of that.
But, but he said, I'm, but, but he looked at me, he said, I'm on board. Let's do it. And so Matt's always been supportive of our, our city staff on every level as a council member and as the mayor, but what I greatly valued is Matt's demeanor when it came to dealing with the matters of the community, both good or bad. He did not get high or low. He stated his position. He could decipher those things and present them. And there was many things that I never heard about because he dealt with it. And so, but I also know the impact it's taken on your family. I know that your kids have walked the halls and had to hear stuff about the city and being in this capacity and raising three adult children now, knowing what the life is for a child that works for a public servant, seeing their parent in the paper, seeing their parent in general, kids see that too. And so I know that's taken its impact on, on Crystal and, and the boys and so, but at the same time, I also know you're hard to serve. And, and I know that you're serving more and you're not done serving and you're serving, I believe you're the president of the bar association now.
I'm the president-elect of the Springfield Metropolitan Bar Association.
So that's an incredible honor. So he's moving from your honor to your honor. I always wanted to call him your eminence, but he wouldn't accept it. Seriously, Matt, I think that on behalf of the staff and just myself as the mayor and as a friend, you've done a fantastic job and thank you for your service and thank you for going all the way through to the end of your term like you said you would do. I greatly appreciate that. And so with that, I thank you for everybody that got out and voted today. That's all I have and staff, I missed it by 12, so.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to throw out there, we had another community meeting last week, I believe, for the downtown revitalization project. It's been really cool to see how many community members show up for that, to see the work the jury students put in on it and kind of the idea of what downtown could turn into. I'm so hopeful that the Historical Society gets that building built because I think that will be a huge shot in the arm of, of what downtown needs and it will explode if that happens. I'm not saying it won't if it doesn't, but if they get that facility there, I think it will really start pulling business and, and change what downtown looks like. And we're going to have more of those meetings, so anybody that hasn't been to them, come to those. It's, it's really neat to see, I think we had close to 40 people at this last one from the community show up just to see what downtown could be and, and kind of lend their ideas to it. Thank you.
Clint, I'm going to save you for last.
Last?
Yeah, last.
Okay.
You just keep working on it. Anybody down here? Mr. Franklin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll just start off with, I'll, I'll go on with the Main Street revitalization. That is, that's very encouraging as a council member to see that sort of involvement from the citizens. That's probably one of the most involved I've seen and something that's, that's fun. It's not a controversy and so I do appreciate what Mr. Neal said about that and all the citizens have come to that. I proposed a question while we were there and asked if anyone there would have an interest in continuing that discussion after all of this was done. And when I left, I had 13 names and contacts for people that were interested in continuing the revitalization on Main Street. And to me, that just spoke of, I was just so excited. I was thankful for that. I have not had that much excitement from the people over something such as Main Street. It's just been, not neglect, it's been at the side for a long time. So I really appreciate everything at Main Street. Last week, we had a chance to sit down at the OTO Board, not the mayor yet, but took our seat there at the OTO Board. Lot of great information, it's still a lot to digest. And so I'm really looking forward in the future to bringing that information back to council and having that collaboration with the citizens and council on that regional effort with our transportation. I knew this was going to be my last meeting as a city council meeting, or city council member for a full meeting. It's been six years I've been sitting up here. One of my very first things that I got to do as a city council member was approve the mayor's recommendation for an appointee to one of the city council members and it just happened to be Matt Russell. I even found the ordinance the other day of the very first thing I got to vote on. So I don't want anyone to feel like I don't appreciate what everyone is doing up here. It's, it's an honor to me to serve next to everyone up here and especially with Matt, with Clint, everyone that I serve up here with, this is an honor. I put on a tough front because it's how I've had to survive for my life, but I am a bit of a softy and it does mean a lot to me that everyone is up here. And Matt, it means a lot to me, the sacrifice that you've made for the citizens. I appreciate that very much. This is my last meeting as, as a council member and I do want to thank the citizens for this. I want to thank the citizens that came out to vote for today. I'm very honored by this opportunity and I'm just very blessed to be here, so I would like to thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. So I figured tonight might need some little lightheartedness, so Jared, I'm glad you showed up. I'm, I'm a little irritated that you all canceled the dodgeball tournament on Saturday. We were prepared, we had our uniforms. So I'm glad you showed up because I really didn't want to pick on Garrett or Jennifer. It's, oh, it is Garrett? All right, Garrett. I know, I know that you're working on getting that back in, but we, we were super excited. So I just want to say I appreciate all the things that you all do over there. It's for every, every age and we're looking for it and then looking forward to it.
Then lastly, Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'm going to be absent at the next meeting. I just want to say thank you for your trust in me, put me on here, but I also want to[1652.33]